The work session of Wednesday, April 5th, will come to order. Move to agenda item one, Resolution Number 417, a resolution to amend Resolution 12-14 regarding a City of Laurel Youth Services Commission to provide changes in the membership and meeting criteria. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. All we've done, as you know, we went through all the different resolutions and committees on this resolution. We, if you look at under Membership B, we took out the mayor shall appoint the chair and vice chair and the seven members and added the commission members shall elect from its members the chair and vice chair annually, and the chair and vice chair may be elected to serve more than one term. As well as, on page two, other city departments may be called upon to assist the commission with programs or provide information at meetings when called upon by the chair of the commission by way of the city administrator. And that's all we've done there and made those changes. We'd ask for, unless you have any questions.
Okay.
These are only changes.
Pretty straightforward there.
Unless Joanne or-
Mr. Smalls, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Excellent. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Ms. Crery?
No questions.
Ms. Crery?
I just wondered what, and this isn't something I don't think we can answer unless the mayor has some knowledge, or Ms. Barr, have they been cooperative as far as providing their taxes to the commission? Have they, had the organizations that have been coming before, they've been cooperative as far as providing their taxes and what they're getting for refunds on the F and G section on page two?
Yeah, the groups have been cooperative. I think one of the obstacles that we have are they are mainly volunteers to the organization and sometimes they might need a little bit of handholding to go through the process, but the committee has been very open and receptive to helping groups through the process.
And I would think, because part of the requirements are two members should be, have business backgrounds, so I would think that would help.
Correct, and it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crery. Mr. Ricks?
No questions.
Okay, if everybody's in agreement, we will introduce and hold the first public hearing at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017, for this resolution. We'll move to agenda item number two, Resolution Number 817, a resolution approving a declaration of covenants, easement, and right of entry with Prince George's County for storm and surface water facility and maintenance, and authorizing the mayor to sign the declaration.
Thank you, Mr. President. The document that you have before you is to authorize the execution of documents that will allow contractors from Prince George's County to enter onto city property to construct some stormwater quality devices. The documents will also cover the permanent easement for county staff to enter onto city property for the purpose of maintaining these devices in perpetuity. So, we're asking that the mayor and council consider this so that we can move forward with these projects this spring.
Before I ask for any comments, do we have to do this for every piece of property we have in the city? Or we may be doing this?
This will be an individual document for each property, yes. Can't get around it.
We have our lovely city solicitor sitting next to you. Isn't there an all-encompassing document you can prepare?
She's the one that just shook her head.
I understand. I'm going to ask the question again.
Unfortunately, it would be hard to do an all-encompassing document at this time because we do not have, or at least I have not been presented with, a list of all of the properties that would be affected at this point. So, we only have the ability to go property by property as the projects are presented.
I'll just throw this out. It would seem to me that we have, we know where our property is, that there should be a way to do an all-encompassing document as of this date, and then add to that, you know, review it every year, or every two years or something. I don't want to take any money out of your pocket. But the fact is, it would seem to me that it's not efficient to do this property by property. But again, I just made a statement, I'm not going to ask you to comment, okay? But that's my position. We ought to take a look at how we can do this to make most efficient use of your resource, okay? All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If I could just add one thing?
Sure.
We're not, at the moment, entirely sure which properties are going to be authorized. We have a list of properties that we have worked with their project engineer to identify, but we, at this point in time, we only have two that I'm aware of that have been approved that we're working on at the moment.
I can understand that, but if, in fact, if, in fact, the administration may change, whether it's in Washington or in Maryland, you may see some different requirements in this arena that may impact additional properties, that's all I'm saying, Mr.-
We'll work it out.
Yeah, okay, good. Okay, Ms. Nicholas. Okay, Ms. Crery?
I would respectfully disagree. I would think that we would want to come before this body, because I want to know, I wouldn't want to give the county carte blanche as to what they're doing on each property, and I would want you to look at each property before they come in and do stormwater improvements.
But we're executing the stormwater improvements. They're only coming in to inspect.
Actually, no, it's all county. All we're doing is authorizing them to enter onto-
They're going to do the improvement.
The whole nine yards. Yes, sir.
Are they doing that from the rainwater fees?
Part of it, yes.
Impact fees.
But we don't contribute any money to it?
Not, other than staff time.
Okay. All right. Good point, Ms. Crery. Anything else? Mr. Ricks?
I agree with Ms. Crery. I think it's a good thing to do to keep us advised of what's going on.
All right. Mr. Smalls?
With this, how much input latitude does the city, does the mayor have with any of these projects, this project in particular? Is there a give and take? I mean, does the county just come in and say, this is what we're doing, you're giving us the right to do it, and they do it? Or do we have, because we do have professional staff here who has some level of experience there, do we have any input-
We have the ultimate right of review and approval.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Smalls. If the council is in agreement, we will introduce and hold the first public hearing at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017, on Resolution Number 8-17. Move to agenda item number three, Ordinance Number 1905, an ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 18, Buildings and Building Regulations, 18-22 Developments Incentives to Continue the Program.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll lead off, and then if Mr. Fleming and or Mr. Brock want to jump in, they can do so. Pretty straightforward. This is the ordinance that we put together back in 2012 for the development incentive program. We put a sunset clause back then, we've brought it forward once before, we're bringing it forward this time again. It is going to sunset in 2017. We think it's worked well. We're not sure that we need a sunset clause on it, and would ask that you consider removing the sunset clause and keep the development incentives in place and keep the written notification that goes to you all and the policy and the program intact. We think it's worked well, and we think it should continue.
Thank you, Mayor. Donna? Ms. Crery, I'm sorry.
I'll reserve on this one. A little more think time.
Thank you, Ms. Crery. Mr. Ricks?
I already thought he had that kind of power, and if it needs us to enforce it, so be it.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Mr. Smalls?
Mr. President, I don't have any issue with this ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Nicholas?
I'll go ahead and say I like it. That's it.
Okay. If the council is in agreement, we'll introduce and hold the first public hearing at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017. Move to agenda item number four, Ordinance Number 1907, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel approving the West Side Boulevard Road Transfer Agreement and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement and all documents necessary to acquire the right of way. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may recall, as part of the agreement for development for West Side Boulevard, the agreement included the requirement that the city take over West Side Boulevard in its entirety for maintenance purposes. We also, this agreement covers the transfer of land that was acquired through the fee simple process. So, this will require state approval, but the method that you have before you for the transfer is prescribed by law for the transfer of real property as opposed to the acceptance of rights of way. So, this document will effect that transfer, assuming state, or, excuse me, the state board of public works approves.
Okay, Mr. Fleming? Questions of Mr. Fleming? Mr. Ricks?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Thank you. Ms. Crery?
What's our general feeling on this?
We're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If the council is in agreement, we'll introduce and hold the first public hearing, the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, April 10th.
I want to note that Mr. Gibbs is their attorney sitting in the back.
I know, that's why we hurried this long to get him out of here.
And he's happy as well, I just note by the smile on his face.
Move to agenda item number five, Ordinance Number 1908, an ordinance to establish a City of Laurel Arts Council to provide for its membership and responsibilities and to establish an arts fund.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things. This goes back, again, when we were talking about the different committees, commissions, and we talked about the establishment of an arts council you have before you in 1908, that ordinance. We did make it an ordinance instead of a resolution. We do establish where they, an arts fund, as you see throughout, in the document. We did give this to the council, asked for input. We did receive questions from Mr. Smalls and some Fred had asked for, instead of one council representative, I'm sorry, one council, one city representative for each of the wards and at large, that two, and we agreed to that, we had no problem with that, so we did make that change. Also, the question regarding if you were an artist, whether you could go on the council, absolutely. In fact, we have one or two that are interested, that are interested in being on that, so that will also be on there, hopefully they'll be on there as well. It establishes, as you see, some definitions, establishes the council fund, the membership, gives some duties for the chairs. We want to try to make this council pretty self-supportive, with some support from the city. You will note that it gives some responsibilities, some guidelines and procedures. It also talks about selection and display standards. And again, once this is up and running, you would see this council get more in-depth on those types of standards, and talks about ownership, exemptions, and so on. So, it's pretty self-explanatory, and I think unless there are others that, as you read through this, have more comments or input, I think we are ready to move And I don't know, Joanne, if you have, did you have anything input? So, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend the administration and mayor for this. This is, I think, something that is going to be a huge success. Sure. I think this arts council is going to be a huge success for the city. There are many very, very talented people who are interested in the community. I've been talking for a very long time about, for me particularly, public displays of art in public places. It's something the mayor and I have talked about over time, and so I'm excited about us moving forward with this. I do have one question, Mayor, and maybe it's just something I overlooked, but the selection of members for the council. Who would any recommendations for membership be made
Well, I would think the representatives from the two wards would make those representative, would make those selections, send them up to the president, as well as the at-large, and send those up to the president, to the mayor. They'd be appointed, and they're actually confirmed, so it's, you know, kind of how we've done it in the past.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
Fred excellently asked my question for me. I was going to ask about membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crery?
I'm fine with this.
Thanks. Mr. Ricks?
This just actually came to my mind just when I started looking this briefing to it again, and is there any way that this can be formulated so that people could make a donation to this arts council and get a tax credit for it?
We can look at that. If you look at the arts council, Laurel Arts Council Fund established, it talks about, first, in A, a fund of the Laurel Arts Council for use by the Laurel Arts Council may be established, and then it talks, in B, rules, regulations pertaining to the use of the funds shall be established by Laurel Arts Council and approved by the mayor and city council before any funds are received in expense or expended. So, I think, once it's set up, that direction can be given to the council, the arts council, and then once they're done, it's going to come back to you all for approval. So, that's some direction that could be given to them as well. In the meantime, we could ask our city solicitor to take a look at that. They're probably going to have to be set up as a 501(c)(3) possibly, or run through the city. And I think, I would also remind us that, you know, we may want to take some small steps as well before we jump into that, because as we move forward, when you start talking about tax credit, we're talking about getting into budget, affecting the budget, all those types of things. So, we just want to remember that as we move forward. But I think anything's possible.
Excuse me, Mayor, but I'm not talking about us giving tax credits. I'm talking, is there a way for them to receive federal tax credits if it's a 501(c)(3)?
Well, there's state, there's state things that can be done through the arts council, but we'd have to look at that. I'm not positive without going back and looking at-
I think that would be wise to pursue it, because sometimes people have, at tax time, extra money, and if they could donate it to something like this, it may be a place where we could get extra money to support something that's really larger than what we were planning for.
All right. Ms. Sale?
Yes, Mayor. Like with the Fourth of July Committee and the city now managing and administering their funds, people can make donations that are tax deductible if those donations are used for a citywide use, a benefit to the general public. So, it depends how you, how you structure the arts council and the fund.
Well, would you like the mayor's suggestion? I think it's certainly reasonable, but I think that, you know, as we move along, I think that that may be something we should-
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Ms. Sale.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. If the council is in agreement, we'll introduce and hold the first public hearing at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017, on ordinance number 1908.
Mr. President, we can, if you'd like, or Mr. Smalls, we can attempt to clean up the appointment piece if you want on that.
Okay. And you'll comment to the mayor?
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comments?
We'll clean it up, basically, to say that the, the city residents by the ward and at large shall be appointed by the ward representative at large through the council president to the mayor, so.
Yep, that's fine.
Anything else? All right. Move to agenda item number six, Ordinance Number 1909, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017. Ms. Sale?
This is our second ordinance to amend the operating budget. It's an overall increase of $670,134. Having received additional red light camera citation revenue, the FEMA reimbursement for last year's Jonas snowstorm, as well as some savings from LAPP salaries for vacant positions, we're proposing to allocate certain amount of those funds as a transfer to the capital improvement program. There were, again, with the additional red light camera citations and life safety review permits, as well as the transit overlay tax, we received additional revenue, but there are also corresponding expenditure budgets that require adjusting for those. We have some intra-departmental transfers made by the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Works. The Laurel Police Department has used some state-awarded seized currency to fund investigative activities, and as you know, we bring those transactions through the operating budget. It's a balance, those are balanced transactions on the revenue and expenditure side, as well as the financial activities of the Laurel Fourth of July Committee that need to be reflected. Again, their money is held separately from the city's money, but we need to show it on the revenue side as well as the expenditure side of the city budget. So, those were the activities that took place that netted the $670,000 increase.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions of Michelle? Ms. Nicholas?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Crery.
Miss Alanius Financing Uses.
That's where the transfer to the CIP is. That's the name of the department.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crery. Mr. Ricks?
No questions, sir.
Mr. Smalls?
No questions.
Where does the, where does the dollar amount for the reimbursement for the snowstorm show up?
Yes, federal grants.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
$86,650.
And then we're reducing our loan balance by the 122?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Additionally, in the budget, when the fire department and rescue squad have gotten loans through the city, we show, again, those are balanced transactions as well. We recover that monthly debt service payment and show it on the revenue side, because we pay from our funds the debt service. However, both organizations have subsequently paid off their loans, so they no longer have loans through us, so this just shows a reduction on both sides, on the revenue and the expenditure side.
And we still owe $27,000 to somebody, correct?
Those were payments made by the fire department.
Okay.
They didn't pay off, I believe, until July.
All right, so it'll show up in this year, is that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions of Michelle? Okay, Michelle. If the council is in agreement, we'll introduce and hold the first public hearing at the mayor and city council meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017. Move to agenda item number seven, Ordinance Number 1910, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Laurel, Maryland to amend City Code, Chapter 20, Article 4, Flood Plane Management, to create the position of flood plane manager and to assign certain duties and responsibilities to the manager. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you're probably aware, currently, the city has a flood plane manager, if you will, in Jack Brock, the director of his department. What we have discovered since our recent adoption of the 2016 flood amendments and the new flood panels is that we ran into some situations with some developments that are having issues primarily with funding the insurance that is required when a property is brought into the 100-year flood that previously was not. As part of this effort, we have, we have discovered that the detail side, or the mechanics of the flood plane ordinance, needs to be managed by an individual who is knowledgeable in the field of emergency management. So, what we have done is we have taken and divided the responsibilities between development in the 100-year flood versus management of the 100-year flood requirements, and it was our recommendation that we create a, or actually not create a position, but add on to the emergency manager's position the responsibility of flood plane manager. So, as we have currently, the management of development in the flood plain will still remain with our planning and zoning efforts, and this document before you will allow for responsibilities to be placed on to the city's emergency manager as far as working the, the management of the details of the 100-year flood. And by details, basically, I'm talking about any amendments to the 100-year flood as it affects development structures within, in a development, and working with FEMA to actually massage the, the elements of the flood plain panels so that if there is any property that was brought- brought into the 100-year flood as a result of an error, be able to work that out. Also, work as the city's coordinator between FEMA and FEMA has an insurance coordinator that works with locals to assist property owners in acquiring floodplain insurance. So that is a function that Steve Allen, who is our emergency manager in my office, that is basically what he has been doing for the last four months, working with developments to lessen, or in fact, he's been able to reduce the impacts of the 100-year flood changes in two of our developments. Clear as mud?
Yeah. Before I move to questions by my colleagues, let me, when I read this thing, there's certain places where the applicant's got to have a licensed engineer do certain things, submit certain things. I assume that that would be part of what would go forward to FEMA from the city to get something out of the floodplain that was included by accident.
Yes.
Does this require that engineer to defend what we're sending forward?
Potentially, yes. Mr. Allen has been working with our consultant engineers on certain flood elevation certificate amendments to work with some of the property owners out there. Obviously, he's not a licensed land surveyor, so the data that is collected for the certificate is provided by our consultant engineers who, by our contract, are required to defend their position.
Okay, so in addition to an applicant for proposed development having to furnish this engineer's certification on whatever they submit, we're going to have to invest some of our money to have our engineers look at it, too?
No. No. On the development side, all of the data produced to determine whether structures are within the 100-year flood, that's still going to be the responsibility of the developer.
That includes when it goes forward to FEMA?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Ms. Crary?
So would MEMA be involved, too? Or only FEMA?
For our efforts, this is only FEMA.
Okay.
We work with MEMA, however, because obviously, MEMA is one of the holders of the flood management data in the state, but FEMA is responsible for any changes.
So when FEMA announces and we disagree, what's the platform that they're now allowing negotiation? Because I never thought they allowed negotiation.
They're not allowing negotiations. What we're doing is proving errors.
I didn't think they allowed errors.
If a property is brought into the 100-year flood as the result of an elevation error, then we have, as well as the property owner, has the right to request an amendment.
That's huge. And it doesn't have to end up before an ALJ. This is something that could just be challenged by presenting the facts to them.
Yes. Mr. Allen has been successful so far in removing seven properties from the 100-year flood that were recently added as a result of the flood map amendments.
What happens if we've lost a development because of an error?
I'm not sure what you mean.
If it was in the floodplain, we proved there was an error, and we've lost a development that moved on because of an error by FEMA, what's the recourse? Is there recourse?
On the development side, again, the developer would be responsible for collecting all the data, determining whether they have issues with the floodplain, and it is their responsibility to work that out with FEMA directly, not with the city. We'll take the data that we receive from FEMA to make a determination one way or the other, but I would think as part of their due diligence, they would be, one of the first things they would want to check out is whether a property that they're potentially going to develop is in the 100-year flood, and that's the point where if they have any issues or a contest, that's the point where they would have to deal with FEMA before they bring it to us. Once we receive the information, if we determine from the information provided that structures will be in the 100-year flood, then we have decisions to make as far as whether mitigation is going to be required or whether we outright reject the development or parts of the development.
Right. And then Mr. Allen would work with our community development?
Absolutely.
Wow, that's a whole new ballgame. Thank you.
Mr. Ricks?
Yeah, I think Mr. Allen's already been doing some of that, has he not?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
It's almost kind of like other duties as assigned at the moment, but this basically defines the responsibilities of the planners versus the emergency manager in the overall management of floodplain issues.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Frisland.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Mr. Smalls?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, to summarize, nothing is really changing here.
No.
We're just reallocating the pie, okay?
Dividing responsibilities.
Right, okay. If the council is in agreement, we'll introduce and hold the first public hearing at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 10, 2017, on ordinance number 1910. Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
Thank you.
Move to agenda item number eight, ordinance number 1911, text amendment number 246, an ordinance amending Laurel City Code, Chapter 20, Section 20-6.12, neo-traditional overlay areas, to permit a neo-traditional overlay area in the RT zone. You have the floor.
Mr. President, the text amendment that is before you amends the Unified Land Development Code to allow for the residential townhouse zone to be one of the underlying zones in addition to the R-55. Currently, to do an overlay, you can only be in R-55. We thought that it would be reasonable to allow the townhouse district to also be an overlay, and the reason for that is you're neo-traditional or townhouses with front loads and backloads and alleyways, so it would only seem logical that you could be able to bring those townhouses closer to the street and reduce overlay, green space and such in a townhouse zoning district. We've also added, currently it says that there will be, you can do this if you provide certain amenities, and we're spelling out those amenities. The provisions of additional amenities which are deemed to exceed conventional development requirements shall be provided and may include, but not be limited to, the dedication of open space, the dedication and/or construction of tot lots, athletic fields, recreation facilities, and associated parking. So this lays out the amenities that they must provide in order to go through this overlay process.
And when we do this, what's the width, the minimum width of a townhouse that would result in this zone?
Currently, it requires 22 feet. Under the overlay, you would be able to have it 20 feet. The front yard is required currently in a townhouse district to be 30 feet. This would allow it to come down to 10 feet. You know, our first overlay, neo-traditional overlay is the crescents, so it would be that similar type of development where you have rear-loaded lots with the alleyways, our front-loaded lots with smaller front yards.
Okay, so the, would allow them to go down to 20 feet?
Yes, sir.
In the planning process, could the planning commission require them to go up 2 feet, the 24 feet, let's say?
That's all negotiable, so yes, they could.
So it's negotiable with the developer?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll make sure. And the move seems to be to be for townhouses with another 2 or 4 feet under the 22, because that allows you typically to put a two-car garage behind a structure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Mr. Ricks?
No questions, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smalls?
Just a real quick point of clarification. Mr. Brock, when you talked about the amenities, is that one or all?
It can be a combination. It has to be in addition to what is required by the district, so these are additional amenities they must provide.
Minimum of one, but...
They could provide two or three tot lots, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
No questions.
Thank you, Ms. Crary.
So if it was dropped down on the front to, from 30 feet to 20 feet, what would be the green space on the front of the lot? 20 feet?
20 feet, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If the council is in agreement, we'll introduce and hold the first public hearing at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 10, for ordinance number 1911. Thank you, Mr. Brock. Move to number nine, agenda item number nine, ordinance number 1912, text amendment number 247, an ordinance amending Laurel City Code, Chapter 20, Article 1, Division 1, Section 20-1.9, and Division 5, Section 20.7.8, commercial zones, and Section 20-9.5, industrial zones, to authorize brewery, pub, and brewery craft in certain zones and providing for an effective date. And we'll go first to Mr. Brock.
Yes, Mr. President. What is before you is a text amendment to allow for brewery pubs and brewery craft, even though our applicant that applied for the text amendment for the brewery craft withdrew his application because he couldn't get the property he wanted to rent. We thought it was a good idea to provide for these two uses currently in the Land Development Code. The craft beer is, as it was proposed in the previous ordinance, with a 7,500 barrel per year maximum, and we've added brewery pub, which would be a restaurant that provides malt beverages as an accessory use, that would require that they have no more than 1,500 barrels per year produced and not exceed 25% of the total floor area. We're recommending that the pub brewery be a special exception in the commercial general and commercial historic district. Additionally, the craft brewery to be a special exception in the industrial general.
Thank you, Mr. Brock. I noticed there's a piece of legislation pending in Maryland, and what I didn't realize is current limitation is 5,000 barrels for these on-site. It's pending, it's, there's a bill pending, it just got passed by me real quick. Does it sound right, Karen?
It does.
Huh?
It does sound right.
Okay, so the limit as it stands right now in the state of Maryland is 5,000 barrels per year, correct? It was going to increase that amount.
I can't say that definitively. I don't recall the numbers from that bill. I'm sorry.
Can I speak into the microphone? I'm sorry, Karen.
No, I was going to say, I'm sorry, I can't speak definitively as to the number of barrels because I don't recall, but I do know that there is that legislation that was pending.
And it died.
And I don't know the stat. It came up at a meeting on Monday night, and I think it was still alive at that time, given the discussions that were going on. You think in the interim?
No, no, the interesting thing was, really wasn't any interest in limiting it, the state just wanted to know how much they were doing. That's what this blurb that I saw sort of intimated was that the state just wanted to, they were going to increase it, but the state was concerned that they weren't going to get, what do they call it, tax revenues?
Is this, but this is the bill that related to the Wacomiko County...
Yes, yes.
...situation, correct? It was not going to extend past Wacomiko County, though.
So it would have been a single county to start.
It was...
But as we know, then they roll it out. Okay.
It was going to open it, it was going to expand the number of gallons, but only in Wacomiko County.
Okay. It's interesting. I mean, things are growing other places, and you go down New York Avenue now, you see a brewery on the left-hand side next to the shelter, the men's shelter and that old cafeteria, all the equipment's there. I don't know what they're brewing down there, but they're brewing something.
After two gallons, who's remembering anyhow?
Anyways, okay, so this is a good idea to get it in the ordinance, and with that, I'll go to Fred. Ms. Smalls?
I'm very excited about this bill, so I think it opens up a number of possibilities for the city, so I'm in favor.
Appreciate that. Ms. Smalls? Ms. Nicholas?
I'm proud of you.
Thank you. Ms. Crary?
Very excited.
Mr. Ricks?
I think it's given us a great opportunity to agree.
Okay, thank you. If the council is in agreement, we'll introduce and hold the first public hearing at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 10, 2017, on ordinance number 1912. Move to agenda item number 10, consideration of bid recommendation, fantastic fireworks. Mr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you are probably aware, in 2015, the city awarded a multi-year contract to Fireworks Productions Incorporated for providing, transporting, and shooting the fireworks celebration for the City of Laurel. This was a three-year contract originally at $35,000 a year. Apparently, there had been some changes at the corporate level. The vendor has changed their name, and there is also a new president of the organization. At the moment, they have yet to name a vice president, but discussing the changes with the city solicitor, it was recommended that this being the last year of the original multi-year contract, we should go ahead and authorize a new contract under the changed name and administration. Also, as part of the administration's changes, they have extended to City of Laurel a savings of $2,000. So for the 2017 fireworks show, they have indicated that they would do that work for $33,000. Additionally, they have offered another three-year contract for $33,000 per year. We have worked with this group for over 30 years, basically since the fireworks were started back up in the late '70s, and they have basically worked with the city to develop the shows, both at McCullough Field as well as at the Laurel High School and now confined entirely to the lake at Goodie Park. They have worked with the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department and the State of Maryland to develop the rules and regulations, the State Fire Marshal's Office, Office of the Bomb Squad. They worked to develop the rules and regulations governing fireworks shoots as well as help develop the tests for certification that is still in use today. This group threw insurance provisions on their own. They work with us and allow us to certify shooters and help put on the show, saving us thousands of dollars in additional labor. So it is the recommendation of the Fourth of July Committee as well as the Office of the City Administrator that we author... the City Administrator, that we authorize continuation of the original multi-year contact, contract, and accept their proposal for a new multi-year contract at $33,000 per year. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. It's interesting to note that, I mean, the price hasn't gone up that much in the 30 years, has it, Marty?
Uh...
Well, it went up, but compared to everything else...
It has gone up, but through the efforts of the committee, as well as the efforts of the vendor, we have, we have been able to do things to reduce the cost and hold the number of shells. Currently, we have one of the longest shows in the region. It's about 35 to 45 minutes long.
Right.
It's about 15,000 shells per show. And as you all are well, well know, it is, it is very well attended.
Yep. Okay. Ms. Nicholas?
Well, it sounds like we're happy with them. I'm fine with it.
Thank you.
Ms. Crary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Totally, yes. I'd be interested to know what we paid for them back in the 70s.
$3,800 per year.
Is that what it was?
And it was Vitale, wasn't this group. We've not been using them. In 1976, we used Vitale for the first few years.
I stand corrected. I was under the impression we'd been using them for all along.
We used Vitale fireworks for about the first five or six years.
I like the way they set them off then with the flares.
Yeah, and then they came out.
Light them up.
Yeah. Mr. Smalls?
I think they do a great job.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm all for approving the contract.
Okay. If the council's in agreement, will the, this consideration of bid recommendation for fantastic fireworks will be on the agenda at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017, for award.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Flumian. Move to Agenda Item Number 11, Consideration of Bid Recommendation, Telephone System Upgrade. Mr. Frost?
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, council members. Tonight, we're gonna discuss a software upgrade to our, to our Avaya phone system. This system was installed seven years ago. Actually, when we opened the police department, we installed it, and then we brought it over to this building. This is somewhat unusual for you to do a software upgrade, because typically, our critical software systems, we pay annual software maintenance payments every year. So what happens is, when the time comes to actually do the upgrade, we've already paid for it. In this case here, we made the decision seven years ago not to do it for several reasons. Phone system software is pretty basic. It's not Windows operating system. It's Linux, so it does not have the security and need for all the security patches. So instead of paying $11,000 a year for the last seven years, which we would have paid, we decided not to pay it. So now, it has come due, and we have gotten our quote from Avaya, and it is $61,227.6 for total system software upgrade, bring us up to date. And that will be by Avaya Bencom out of Columbia. They are the partners we've had since, since we started. They're familiar with our system and all the, all the integrations we have at the police department with our recording systems and that.
All right. Mr. Frost, and I assume that they will provide any necessary training for your technicians...
Training is in there.
...at the, at the police department also, correct? As part of the contract?
Um...
On the, on the software?
On the software itself, this is all, all backend. The end users, everything will work as it is.
Yeah, I understand, but you've still got some, we have people train in case something's, something doesn't work, I assume.
Yeah, there is, there is, there's training hours in there.
Okay.
And I'll just tell you, so you're aware of it. At the same time, it did not meet the thresholds to come to council, but we also are upgrading our recording system there.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna integrate it at the same time.
Okay.
Which is a different vendor.
Thank you, Ms. Crary.
Is that black hole of software that we're gonna be seeing in a few weeks in your budget, correct?
The black hole software?
Yeah. Mr. Smalls refers to. I have no problems with this.
Well, actually, we saved about $16,000 by not paying the 11 grand a year.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Mr. Ricks?
No comment.
Thank you, Mr. Smalls.
Well, since Councilwoman Crary put me out there...
She threw you under the bus.
Well, I've, I've had questions, and so my question with this one is, why? I mean, what, what does an upgraded telephone system provide to city staff?
That's a good question, and the reality is, in the, at the endpoint, at the desk, at their phone, they're not gonna see, there's, there'll be a few more features. But what it is, is the actual operating system on the servers, we're two versions behind right now. And like I said, this is pretty basic phone software. It doesn't change a lot, but the vendor is not supporting anymore. And so if we don't upgrade and we do have an issue, they will not support us. That's, that's the reason we have to upgrade now.
And I'm, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here or anything, but what kind of issues could we have? I'm just trying to understand, you know, where this is going. So Windows versus Linux, issues, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what kind of issues we could possibly have with a telephone system.
Yeah, so we, we had an issue probably mid-winter. The system went down, and we, we had to call and have them come in to get it back up. And one of the servers went down, and we thought it was gonna be down hard. We thought we were not gonna get it back. Avaya came in. We got it back, and they basically told us at the time that the system software is out of date, and they're, they're not gonna support it anymore. We have to upgrade to 7.1. So we're at 5, 5.1, so...
So it's, it's, it's one of those IT black holes. I mean, you, you, you get a system, or a piece of software, or an application, and in order to maintain it, you just keep putting money into it, money into it.
This is actually pretty good, because we, we got seven years. Typically, you know, I would go through three versions on a Microsoft system before I would upgrade. In other words, exchange, our, our mail system. You know, we're at 2013 right now. 2016's out, 2018 is about to come out. So we would probably wait another version or two, so two or three more years. Now, with the cybersecurity issues coming out, we're not gonna go out a full three years. We're gonna go less than that now. But typically, with a Windows system, you can go three versions before they break things, where it won't work anymore. And that's ultimately what happens, is the code starts to get different enough, it will not work. So the other, the other thing is, is our servers are seven years old. They've been running 24 hours, 365, and they're end of life, so...
Thank you, Mr. Smalls. It's tax time. I use TurboTax. Guess what? It wouldn't load into my computer this year.
Yeah.
They just gave me a message, says, forget it.
Upgrade, upgrade your operating system.
That's correct. That's correct, because it turns out that Microsoft is no longer supporting that operating system, and TurboTax doesn't want to be responsible for the mismatch.
Yeah. It's gonna get a lot of time with all the cybersecurity stuff happening now.
I just mentioned this, that if they split the cybersecurity responsibility in the United States away from NSA, which they're proposing to do, I think it's gonna get even more cloudy. But that's just my opinion. I saw that, I saw that article today and had to read it. But again, I think that seven years is a long time. I'm surprised they were able to get it back when it went down. Because the other part of that is, they don't have the technicians trained in the old systems anymore. They've moved on. Those technicians are now, you know, they're three versions ahead.
They're the older folks, that's for sure.
Well, they're old farts like me and you, okay? I mean, I get calls all the time in my agency about things I did 20 years ago. Yeah, it's water under the bridge. Okay, so if the council is in agreement, the, this is on the agenda of the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April 10th, 2017, for an award of telephone system upgrade to IAA. Am I saying it right? IAA?
Avaya.
Avaya?
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frost. Okay, we're gonna move to Agenda Item Number 12, Discussion on Revision to the City of Laurel Ethics Ordinance. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. President. We've been working on this for quite some time, had numerous revisions. Tonight, I just wanted to give you an update on where we're at, and we did give you a, a copy of one that we've been working on. The current copy that's in front of you was given to the Board of Election Supervisor Chair, as well as of the Chair of the Ethics Commission. Did ask both of the chairs to provide input. We did get comments back from both the chairs, as well as, I think, a couple of their committee members. That has not been added to this copy in front of you. We'll do that. I ask that you take this and mark it up and provide me your input. This, still, whenever we get to our version, has to go before the State Ethics Commission for comment and approval. But if you will, what we have done is, on the second page, has gone back and tried to clean up things that are already being done, such as, we have already got legal counsel for the Ethics Commission separately, that we do through the budget process. The financial disclosure is required. The candidates, you know, we had some discussion about that off and on. The candidates running for office have to fill out a disclosure. One of the things that we didn't think they had do, or at least I didn't think they had to fill those out, we were gonna drop that until we read the state law, until I read the state law. The, what happens is, under state law, well, under ours, the Board of Election Supervisors run the election. So what was happening before was that the requirement for the financial disclosure was going to the Board of Election Supervisor. State law requires it to be transmitted to the, to the Ethics Commission within 30 days after it's received by the Board of Election Supervisors. Really doesn't say what happens after that, so we're trying to clear that up as well, meaning that it should go to, be transmitted to the Board of Election Supervisors within a time period that, once they have their hearing or their review, they will transmit their findings back to the Board of Election Supervisors. They don't say whether they're qualified or not qualified. They should basically say something to the effect of whether they met the requirements or the intent of the law. I'm not sure what terminology they should be using yet, so... And then that goes back to the Board of Election Supervisors, and then the Board of Election Supervisors should make those determinations. And it really all goes back to the certification of candidacy, which requires certain things in the packet, which are the candidate name and address, the officer, the office they are running for, requires whether they're registered voter and their, their petition, and their signature, signatures on the petition, and so forth. There's, you can read all of that on page six, five and six. Then it gets into the time of the filing. As I said, one of the things is, when you fill up, fill out a candidacy and you get your signatures, if the opening is for, let's just say, two months, that you can drop your packet off, it, to me, it causes an, an issue where that 30-day requirement that it has to be transmitted over to the Ethics Commission, they're, they're gonna kind of go back and forth, they're gonna be different, there's gonna be different hearings, or everybody's gonna be going back and forth, in my view. So I think we need to take a look at that window and when we want the deadline for these packets to be dropped off. So that, that's another, and you'll see some of that in here. And, and I say, take a good look at that and how, and make sure it's, it's, it's clear to you. And that's things, not only to you, but to the general public or others that, you know, may want to run for office. So those are things that I'm concerned about. I don't think, it's still very clear to me, and I think I'm gonna take a, continue to take a look at that. And I think both the chairs have made some comments, and again, once we get that, we'll share with, share it with you as well. The other issue is, once, once that information starts coming in, you'll see that it should be in separate packs, so that it's really the clerk or the clerk's office is not, it doesn't fall back on that individual, because as I just said, it really belongs in the Board of Election Supervisor's hands, and that information should be transmitted, once it's open, to the appropriate, either Board of Election Supervisors or to the Ethics Commission. There's still a filing fee, and then there's certain dates in here that you'll see, and then there's requirements of, as you'll see here on page six, time for filing, certificates for candidacy. So that's something you'll see there as well. And that is kind of where we're at right now. And as I said, we just got yesterday, both the chairs' comments, and I did not have time to go through all of them and get that information to you, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, and would ask that if you have any comments, you know, mark them down or mark it, mark the copy you have, or I'll try to answer any questions you may have this evening. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Do you, you've got some comments you've got to get to the council. Do you still want to have this introduced on the 10th of April? Do you want to hold off eight? Oh, gee, I mean, if we can get that, let's just see where we go. Let me see what I get down. So we may hold off any introduction until we've incorporated Karen's wagon or head, yes? Thank you, Karen. I mean, so that means, that means there's time for the council members to comment back to you with the copy to him. If we, if we can get it down on the 10th, we will, but... Yeah, yeah. Okay, excellent. Any questions, Mr. Ricks?
No, but I mean, I, I remember two years ago, or a year and a half ago now, one of the objections that a lot of individuals had was signing what their birth date was. And there are just some people that do not like to share that information.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Mr. Smalls?
I'm gonna review this and read it carefully and then provide comments.
Give me both. Give me both, Mr. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
Same here. I'm gonna read it and then provide my comments later.
Ms. Crary?
Happy birthday, Mr. Frost. The, I'll review, but I don't know if I have all my comments by Monday, the 10th. And I think it's fine to introduce on the 10th, it just may be ongoing comments. And if we have the two to three hearings, we should be fine.
Okay.
You don't have to worry about the 10th. I'm not worried about the 10th.
Yeah. When it's ready, it'll be ready.
Yeah.
And...
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
Huh? Nothing wrong with that. Introduce it on the 10th, we have three years.
I'm not, you don't do what you want. I'm not gonna be ready by the 10th.
Okay, so I'd like... Okay, so I'd like, you know, personally, I'd like to see the file format, and then introduce it.
No, I agree. I didn't hear you say that.
Okay, excellent. All right. Move to agenda item number thirteen, draft ordinance to amend the City of Laurel Economic Development Program to expand the businesses that can apply for the Main Street Relocation Grant Program and the Retail Storefront Facade Improvement Program, and provide an empty and effective date. Mr. Brock?
Before you is an amendment to the Economic Development Program to expand the area where it can be applied for. Before you on the screens are the Main Street Relocation Grant that is currently in place. This is the requested amendment that adds the area from Little Montgomery down to Bowie Road on Washington Boulevard and Second Street. The next slide is the Facade Improvement Program, and the next slide will be to propose amendment also from Little Montgomery down to Laurel Street. This will provide a broader group of businesses to apply for these grants. If you recall, recently, it was amended to add additional business types, and this is just a second amendment to the program, hoping to open it to more businesses.
All right, Ms. Brock. Questions? Mr. Smalls?
I hate to show my unfamiliarity, if that's a word, but where is Little Montgomery?
Right.
I'm looking at the map here. I see Montgomery Street. I'm familiar with that, but where's Little Montgomery?
Right in between. Goes between the two of...
The alleys?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It's on Route One.
So Fetty is here...
Next to the liquor store.
By Danny's.
Between the liquor store and...
Got it.
Okay.
I understand.
Never came on, is...
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. No comment, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brock.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Ms. Nicholas?
I like the program. I like to look a little closer at it, but I like it.
Okay. Ms. Crary?
More inclusive, the better. I think this is great. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Thank you, Ms. Crary. Thank you, Ms. Crary. Mr. Ricks?
Well, we've certainly tried these types of approaches in somewhat, some shape or form before, and certainly, this expands that, and I totally like that. And certainly, these are all areas that we care a lot about and put a lot of time into, and this is another showing of our willingness to step forward and to, in a number of ways, you know, offer some assistance, if you will, to making the Main Street and Route One corridor a better place for everyone. So I do thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ricks. Ms. Smalls?
Mr. Brock, I just wanted to do a follow-up question real quick, and looking at the map, it extends down to the Mark Station. Has there been any real interest in extending this relocation down to Lafayette?
It goes Lafayette.
And then down Lafayette at all? Okay, all right. That's...
I forgot about that, too, but we picked all that up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Smalls. Let me just, the coffee shop opened today, is that correct?
They had a soft opening today.
Soft opening?
Yes, sir.
Did they apply for any grant in renovating that space?
Not to my knowledge.
Did our person go speak to them? I mean, they spent a lot of money there, a lot of money. Huh? I know. But again, it just, I mean, I watched them put the I-beams in, watched them take the I-beams out. Apparently, they had a structural problem, and they had to do something else. I mean, it looks good. And it's, what's the name of that place?
Ragamuffin.
Ragamuffin, that's correct. We're going to have a bunch of, we're going to have an overabundance of coffee shops on Main Street around the area.
It's down there beyond.
But the more the merrier if they can all make money.
Junk shop.
Okay, if the council is in agreement, we'll award, no, no, we'll go ahead and introduce the draft ordinance at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, April tenth, two thousand seventeen. And that's all I have to come before the council. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.